Commissioner Tisdale.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 21st meeting of the San Joseph County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the agenda, I will note if anyone is here to speak on any of the ARP funding that was passed by the San Joseph County Council last Tuesday, the Board of Commissioners, by, I guess, directive from the federal or state government, we are not allowed to take action on those things. So if you are here to speak on those matters, we are not hearing those today because we don't have the authority to do so. Just wanted to make everyone aware before we move forward. All right. First order of business, opening reading of bids. I will note there are none. Move on to reports and requests from the Commissioners. First item is the accounts payable document. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Are those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Next, move on to the business of the month. Commissioner Dieter.
Sure. The business of the month from San Joe County is Bourbon Street Pizza. If y'all both want to go step over to the podium, then you have 15 minutes to talk about your... No, just go. I got you covered. So, we have Tommy Weeks, who is a fine representative of Walkerton Government, one of the town council members there. She made the request for Bourbon Street Pizza. They have been operating in Walkerton, but in the short time they have been there, they've made a tremendous impact on the community. They've been working with the Parks Department to help provide concessions for sporting events, community events, and fundraisers. The local schools have come to depend on Bourbon Street for incentives. Our children now ask for Bourbon Street by name. Bourbon Street Pizza has become a staple in Walkerton. We couldn't be more pleased with Tim and Chris for all the things they do in Walkerton. I don't know how much of an impact of pizza could make until they arrived in our community. Bourbon Street Pizza has boosted the hometown feel and a sense of community in the town. As a community, we would like to show our appreciation for everything they bring to our community. What's the best pizza you make?
Any pizza?
What is it? Pepperoni?
You know, you name it. We use high-quality ingredients.
Okay.
I would recommend any. Taco pizza's pretty popular, supreme pizza, five meat, any combo I think you'd like.
And those are waiting in the lobby?
I have no idea, but you know...
Okay. Well, thank you. We appreciate it. Tommy?
I nominated them after talking with the community, and it was a consensus that Bourbon Street has done so much for the community and needed recognition.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you very much.
Give me a round of applause.
Are we ready for a photo op, Frank?
Now we have Citizen of the Month, Commissioner Dieter.
Thank you. Nadeem. I'm very pleased to nominate and give the award to Nadeem Ahmad Ilan, who was born and raised in Jordan. When he was 14, he came to join his father, Ahmad, in the United States. He graduated from John Adams in 2016 and has been pursuing a career in the business field, following in his father's footsteps. If you don't know, the Portage Avenue Convenience Store or anything else in the area of Portage and Elwood, he and his family have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars for restaurants, the convenience store, cleaning up the area has done a tremendous job. He knows people in the community. He knows a lot, which is a good thing for the police department and when I need to follow up on stuff, so it's good. So he is currently also a student at Indiana University at South Bend, pursuing his bachelor's degree in international business and associate's degree in business administration from Ivy Tech. And he recently was accepted in the Ball States University for a bachelor's degree in logistics. He's also a member of the National Honor Society. Besides his life as a student, he has been in charge of a family business since he's been 17. He is now 21, and through his experience, he's been compared to many large business managers. He's learned a vital lesson from both business and the community, which is humbleness. This has allowed him to care for others and better his community in wanting to expand the family business and give my community, his community, opportunities for a job. He, one day, wants to have an impact in the community and benefit what the work of hard work and support for family and business.
Thank you so much.
The microphone is yours.
Thank you so much, Derek Dieter. You did an impact on all our stores by supporting us and helping us with any question that we have. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Come on down. Now we turn to our Employee of the Month, Commissioner Fleming.
Okay. Our Employee of the Month, he is from the San Joseph County Prosecutor's Office, and his name is Juan Rodriguez. And he is investigator in our offices for three years, and he retired from San Joseph County Police Department and worked courthouse security prior to coming to the office here. Juan has been in law enforcement for over 40 years and still is carrying a full workload for at 80 years old. And he delivers child support summons, criminal subpoenas in a 65-mile range from South Bend. He travels prompt service. Unwavering professionalism is a standard he maintains and a vigorous schedule, and he is critical for the mission of the office and the service he provides to the county, and we are so honored that he's able to do that. So, thank you so much.
Recording in progress.
Why don't you come up, Juan, if you want to have, say a couple of words? I guess while you come up, I can't think of anyone that would want to come out of retirement to work for Ken Cotter, but God love you for doing that.
Thank you. Ken Cotter, I want to thank him for the opportunity to continue to work, and also my Chief Investigator, Dave Newton, and I continue to work for San Joe County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come up for a picture and then...
Can I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Go back to the podium. This is like, this is your life if we want to go that deep. But no, I'd like to thank Juan. I've known him for probably all those 40 years in law enforcement, if not more. Fantastic person. The community is able to speak to people the right way. Been to many memorable bus trips, which we won't speak about, but again, all the stuff you do in the community, it is recognized by us, and I specifically can do that because I can attest to you work on the street and working with people. So keep up the good work. Appreciate it, Matt.
Thank you, Commissioner Dieter.
We'll now turn back to Commissioner Dieter for the Youth of the Month.
The Youth of the Month is Jalen Wilson, who is under the weather, so we will do that next month.
Sounds good. All right. Moving on to... And just as I said, this is one of the best things we get to do as a Board of Commissioners. I mean, some of the things that we do might be a little controversial, but it's great that we can come together and recognize and acknowledge the great work that's being done in our community by folks. So, thank you for doing great things. All right, move on to bills passed by the County Council. At a public hearing held on September 14th, 2021, council took the following actions. Bill 7721 became ordinance 8021. This is the inter-local agreement for the consolidation of the public safety answering point. I kind of modified what that was.
And then it'll freeze up again.
The... I think we have ordinance 2021-01 is actually a resolution that was passed. So, Counselor, I do not believe we hear resolutions passed by the County Council.
You do not, and by law, the only action necessary for the adoption and approval set forth in that resolution were by the San Joseph County Council and one other unit here in San Joseph County.
So we will not be taking, are not allowed to take action on that.
Correct.
That'd be resolution, it says 1021?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're not doing that one. Okay.
Correct. Next, we have Bill 8821, which is ordinance 8121, is a salary amendment for the Health Department. We have Bill 8921, ordinance 8221, and Bill 9121, ordinance 8321, and Bill 9221, ordinance 8421, all salary amendments for the probate court. Bill 9021, ordinance 8521, a salary amendment for the Board of Commissioners and Human Resources. And then we have Bill 8721, ordinance 8621, the monthly transfers and appropriations. Bill 10421, ordinance 8721, amendment for the salary amendment for the prosecutor. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve these ordinances.
Second.
We have motion to second. Are those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, move on to the Health Department. Request approval to apply for a safety PIN grant funds through the Indiana Department of Health to increase infant, to decrease, I'm sorry, infant mortality.
Morning. Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, with offices on the eighth and ninth floor, and we are requesting support to apply for a grant that would put community health workers into our women's care centers to reduce the risk of infant mortality.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the safety PIN grant funds.
Second.
We have motion to second. Are those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval to apply for grant funds through the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council to conduct and expand community outreach.
Yes, this one is a request for support to employ community health workers as well as salary recovery for our Congregate Living Coordinator.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. How does that work?
I'm going to defer to Harry Gilbreth, who is our outreach coordinator. Harry?
Hi, my name is Harry Gilbreth. I'm the Congregate Outreach Coordinator for the Department of Health, with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of this building. So, this grant, if awarded, will cover the cost of my salary for this year, as well as give us funding to create one-year contracts for two CHWs to assist in my outreach to the unhoused and to those residing in homeless shelters and for working with and to help interface with food banks and shelters that work with homeless people. This would not commit us to any ongoing programs or obligations once the grant...
Okay. Tammy?
Go ahead, man. Keep going.
I'm sorry. I apologize. This would not commit us to any ongoing programs or obligations. It doesn't, we don't need any commitment for funds on our end. This would just be to, if awarded, it would give us some extra money and give us the ability to hire on two more people to help out.
So how many people, how many people do you have now?
Right now, it is only myself. So this would put two more people to work with me in this space and allow me to focus on some of the more, some of the more trying things I'm working towards, like creating a database with other service providers to help expand data sharing between service providers, and this would assist me with some of the day-to-day stuff, like testing out in the community, our Wash Wednesdays program, monitoring and caring for people in the regional planning committees, overflow isolation space, assisting and educating shelter residents on the benefits of the vaccine, and so on and so forth.
What is, how many, what is your, I guess, goal? How many people to reach?
Our goal is to reach 500 people, approximately.
Okay. And where do you plan on doing all that?
At the various shelter spaces, Congregate Living Facilities, and other places frequented by people without housing.
Okay, specifically where? Do you know?
Yeah, motels for now, Our Lady of the Roads, Food Bank, Broadway Christian Parish, Center for the Homeless, The Hope. Would you like me to keep going?
Yeah. Do you, are you going to any encampments that are specifically in a building?
Right now, we're not working with any street encampments at the moment, no.
Okay. Well, I would encourage you because that's the people that need the most help.
Yeah, absolutely, and I would love to have some extra healthcare, community healthcare workers to assist me in that outreach.
Okay. I'll be glad to push you in the direction of that, so we can hook up at some point.
Yeah, I would, I would love to partner on this with you.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve to apply for the grant funds for the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to infrastructure planning and growth. Request approval of professional services agreement with Barnes and Thornburg.
Good morning. Bill Shalio, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the seventh and the 11th floor. Before you today is a professional service agreement with Barnes and Thornburg to provide the Redevelopment Commission and commission staff with additional legal services as relates to, but not limited to, creation of a new TIF district or new economic development area, bond council services, and other related services, as we look to review the new, the new Car, New Carlyle Economic Development Area, and also the potential creation of a new development area related specifically to a solar project. The Redevelopment Commission has approved this agreement at their meeting on September 14th. Would be happy to answer any questions for you if you have them.
Are there, in fact, any questions or comments from the board?
Sure. Could you explain what, I guess, the whole TIF aspect, if you've got to that yet? Because I still, I know we still haven't reached much of anything on the solar, proposed solar issue. How does this affect that, or is it a flip-flop on, we need to go with solar thing? Just explain more of this.
Yeah, so basically, what this contract does is just widens our bench. I mean, we obviously have Thorne Grodnik, and we have Sander Dalton on our team. This just provides us additional bench depth, if you will, as we study TIF districts, as we study...
There's that, what bench gap? Explain that.
Well, so, I mean, we have a lot of, a lot of knowledge on our team on TIF district law, TIF financing, all those kind of things. What Barnes and Thornburg does is just brings additional knowledge to our team as we look to study these additional things. They would help us put together a development agreement. If that's the direction we go, they'd help us put together any of the financing structures within the existing TIF law structures.
And what's that projected expense?
So, right now, we're still working through that cost as part of the development agreement. We would have an up to $250,000 cap that all our professional service costs would be covered by. So at this point in time, any cost that we obtain as part of this research and development would be covered by those costs.
So, at 250, and if we have to go, what do we do? Come back again, or?
Well, no, the agreement's capped at 250. I can't imagine we'd actually hit anywhere near $250,000 to cover our costs until we get to such time as we would do a bond project. That bond work would then probably push us near that 250 limit.
I have no further questions at this time. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the professional service agreement with Barnes and Thornburg.
Second. We have a motion to second. Are those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes two to one. Thanks, Bill, for this. I think part of it is, as we look to bring development, we want to make sure the mechanics of it, if it fits within the area, and Barnes and Thornburg have been very helpful as we looked in other TIF areas to make sure that the county is well represented as we negotiate with outside firms and entities who might look to relocate in San Joe County.
And it's with that special economic development group route moving forward.
Correct. Moving on, request approval of an agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering for Demolition Services, State Road 2 and Larison Boulevard.
So this proposal is actually an addendum to an existing contract we already have. We had previously contracted Christopher Burke to help us with a number of services out in the IEC or the New Carlyle Economic Development Area. Specifically, this is a contract related to demolition services and site prep on properties that the Board of Commissioners owns at the northeast corner of State Road 2 and Larison. As we have owned those properties, we are in a position now, because of a lease that has now expired that we're closing out, we have the ability to clear it and the adjacent piece of property. Those properties have become nuisance properties, not only for the adjacent property owners, but at the entrance to the park. Also creates some visual issues because of growth of materials and things like that on the site. So this is a contract to help us put together demo specs and demo inspection services for the clearance of those properties. This is a contract amount of $16,000, or it's an addendum in the amount of $16,000, and we would note that the Redevelopment Commission approved this contract at their meeting on September 14th. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
There's one point of clarification as well, and a question was raised, why are we outsourcing this? Why don't we just do this internally? And then your answer then, and still is, we just don't have currently the internal capacity to do these things. We've done them in the past. We just don't have the appropriate level of staffing to do that. So that is why we are outsourcing this. That's one of the prices we pay for a smaller staff than we've had in the past. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, I agree. That is true, though, that we have our short staffing engineering division, so they need to help that, so, because we don't have the staff that we need. So, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering for Demolition Services.
Second.
We have motion to second. Are those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, request approval of an agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering for Demolition Services, Area 51 on Elm's campus.
Well, I like to build stuff. Sometimes you have to tear stuff down. Demolition is progress. In this particular case, this is the demolition service proposal for House 51. And by way of a little explanation, back in 2000, 2001, the county purchased 51 homes that were then assembled to make a piece of property that could be used by AM General for the Hummer 2 project. That property now is currently leased through SF Motors to Electric Last Mile Solutions, but there was one house, House 51, that still remains on the site. That house has been used for a variety of uses over the years, but has outlived its usefulness. The Elm's team would like the property removed. We had agreed at such time when the house was ready to come down that we would demolish it. So again, this is to help prepare demolition specs for the demolition of that, as well as provide demolition oversight through that process. This is a $14,000 contract that has been approved by the Redevelopment Commission at its September 14th meeting. Any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Are there, in fact, any questions or comments from the board?
I guess it's going to be the Jefferson McKinley area, right?
Correct. Yep.
There are no more questions. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this agreement with the Christopher B. Burke Engineering for Demolition Services, again.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have request approval of an agreement with Lawson Fisher Associates for Pierce Road Extension Study.
Attached to this proposal in the, in the packet today is a professional service agreement with Lawson Fisher Associates to develop a corridor study addressing the extension of Pierce Road between current limits at Miami Highway intersection extending eastward to the intersection with Bremen Highway or State Road 331. One of the things we've looked at is we've looked at enhanced mobility options on the south side of the county, is that we have this mile and a quarter gap between Miami Highway and 331, and so this study will begin to address the potential to expand the roadway to connect those two pieces. We're presently doing a project on Pierce Road from the interchange at 331 east to Miami Highway to improve Pierce Road. This would then be that next piece that would allow for connectivity. If built at some point in the future, State Road 4, Pierce Road would connect all the way from La Porte County well into Elkhart County, so we have this one little piece of gap that, that needs to be studied to look at future connectivity and construction. Proposal is the amount of 58,300. Proposal's been approved by the Redevelopment Commission on its meeting on September 14th, and staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there, in fact, any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this agreement with the Lawson Fisher Associates for the Pierce Road Extensions.
Second.
We have motion to second. Are those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Lastly, request approval of a letter of intent from Magnus Capital Partners to study development opportunities on county-owned land located on Portage Avenue.
So, in the packet today is a letter of intent proposal submitted by Magnus Capital Partners to study development opportunities on county-owned land commonly known as the Portage Manor Campus. The Portage Manor Campus is, as I would describe, the larger area that encompasses not only the Portage Manor facility, the farms, the ravine, the Chet Wagner Little League, but also the cemetery and the highway garage. So the larger Portage Manor Campus. What this letter of intent would allow Magnus to do is to enter into an exclusive purchase negotiation for the property, would allow them to formalize some sub-area development plans for the property and the surrounding acreage as we look to look at different uses on the site. We would be able to do, during this study period, have conversations and coordinate with City of South Bend as we look to do zoning, subdivision, and other requirements, because this property exists within the city limits. So there would be a period of time with certain activities would have to occur with the City of South Bend, so we'd work to build those, those into the mechanism. And then also, because a lot of work that they do is, is using federal programs, there'd be the opportunity to study the potential for funding sources for the Portage Manor building itself, whether it's for upgrades to that facility or the construction of a new facility. And I know that that's work that the existing Portage Manor Board is contemplating how funding could apply to that. So what we'd ask for you to do is your approval of this letter of intent today would allow that study period to begin. We've had conversations with DLZ. We've had conversations with the Portage Manor Board and others. We believe that this is a good direction to study, and so we'd ask for your approval of this letter of intent. Any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I've got several. Who is Magnus Company?
So the Magnus Capital Partners, and actually Vishal with Magnus is on the phone, and I could let him talk specifically to who they are, if you'd, if you'd like that. That may be a little easier.
Sure. Fire away.
Frank, I don't know if you can.
Can you hear, can you hear, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I'm actually on a plane, so my apologies in advance for the poor connection that had to drop me. But, thank you, thank you, board, for hearing the proposal. Magnus Capital Partners is a Grand Rapids, Michigan-based real estate development firm focused exclusively on workforce housing and mixed, mixed-use development opportunities in the Midwest. We have launched a workforce housing brand in West Michigan already called Home Flats. We would look to bring the Home Flats brand and ecosystem and value system to South Bend. We've been talking to Bill for some time now and are very encouraged by the opportunity that is there at the Portage Manor campus.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question? Hold on a second. Can I ask you a question? This is Dieter from the Commissioner's Office. Who, did you contact redevelopment, or did they contact you?
I had reached out.
Pardon me?
I had reached out.
You had reached out?
Yeah, they had reached out to us through City of South Bend.
Okay, when did that happen?
It's been several months ago at this point.
I need, I don't need several, I need, when did that happen?
I would be able to go through my notes, but yes, this year.
Was this in June?
I, I think it was earlier than that. I'd have to go back and look at my notes when we first started having conversations.
March?
I, Commissioner, I don't have that, I mean, I don't recall off the top of my head when we first started having conversations.
Okay, so, the City of South Bend reached out to you, sir, or St. Joe County?
We had reached out, our firm reached out, sir, to discuss opportunities that were available, both in the City of South Bend as well as in the county, and that's where this conversation appeared.
So, when did you reach out?
That was earlier this year also, several months ago. I don't have an exact date, but several months ago.
Okay, well, I'm trying to, at least we can get a month. Do you have no idea when you, what month you reached out to them?
I can, I can have a quick look before we start the conversation.
Vishal, this is Lori. I think it was February, because I have an email up, looks like it might be February.
Who's this?
That's Lori Plung, one of our directors, who's on the line as well, who offered some accuracy. It was February, according to her notes.
Is that about right, Bill, February?
I, we may have been in contact, I mean, they contacted the city first, looking at sites. I, it may have been March or April when we first got contacted.
Okay, since February, how many discussions have you all had about this?
Ten.
Okay. And I see in this, your memo, and there's some discrepancies of dates and times, whatever. You said that staff has worked with the Portage Manor Board of Directors. Who specifically?
Mike Mish, we met with Patty Gadsay, and then Robin, when she was with Portage Manor, was part of that meeting.
So, just Mr. Mish and Patty, that's all?
At this point in time, yes. That was the initial meeting that we had with the board, so.
Okay, did you meet with the former director?
Yes, Robin was at that meeting.
And when was that?
I, I'd have to go back through my notes, I don't have that with me.
Okay, also says that you've worked, who from the city have you worked with?
Tim Corcoran, with the City of South Bend's Department of Community Investment.
Okay.
He was the one that brought the project to the county, as the project site is within the City of South Bend.
Okay, and then I see in the, like, on your memorandum, you just copied the bullet points they had in their letter from July 28th, and then they also, did they go to redevelopment to talk about this at all?
No, there hadn't been any conversation with redevelopment, because it's not in the redevelopment.
Okay, because on another one of their forms, they have a date that this is agreed and accepted on the third day of September. What was that about?
Well, I think we had anticipated hitting the last meeting, your claims meeting, but we didn't put it on to the claims meeting. It was suggested it'd be on a public meeting, so that's why it's on this meeting.
Have you addressed this proposal to the entire Board of Directors, Portage Manor?
Have not, no. We wanted to get it approved here, and then we would go back to the full Board of the Portage, and that was at Mike Mish and Patty's suggestion for the conversation, is that we take this.
Back up a second, so, Mike and Patty didn't want to address the whole board?
Well, we've, we've had multiple conversations with the board over the last couple of years about projects at Portage Manor.
But hold on, this is, I get that, but specifically with this project, the whole board wasn't knowledgeable of that.
Nope, they have not been.
Don't you think that would have been a good idea?
I think we filed a recommendation of the board leadership to.
Right, this is my question.
I understand that, but I'm answering, I'm answering your question.
Well, I'm asking him.
Well, I was going to answer the same way, I took my direction from the board leadership.
Okay.
That may not have been the good thing to do. And again, I, what I understand is that they really want to purchase the property there and purchase the buildings and move, and so, we won't own it anymore?
Well, that's not entirely true. What they would need to do is purchase the land, whether Portage Manor, that would be subdivided off separately.
So, let's go back to Commissioner. Dieter has the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll follow up, because I've got a lot more questions, and I know, I think there's some people that also want to speak about this, so I'll just, I have no further questions at the present time.
Any other questions for the board? Hold that thought, sir, hold that thought. Any other questions from the board?
Well, you just heard my question, and again, you know, we have talked about that for years, about what we wanted to do, not sell that property, but we wanted to make sure we could update it and help people. I just want to continue to help people.
Certainly, and I think this gives us a financial stream that could be used to help make those building improvements. That's why we're examining this potential.
And just as a point of clarification, does, if we look to move forward to an affordable housing structure there, will that impact or limit Portage Manor's ability to expand, either build a new structure, update their existing one, does that limit their ability to take action in the future?
No, I believe that part of the reason why we're looking to set aside this study, as well as the study we're doing on the highway garage, is to look at how all these pieces fit together within a larger stream. We know that we have some funding issues with Portage Manor for making existing building improvements or even future building improvements, so we need to put all the different opportunities on the table so that we can see how those all fit together.
Okay, so, once again, though, just for clarification, this is, there's no intent to limit Portage Manor's ability to function either now or in the future?
That is absolutely.
By this, this study?
Absolutely correct.
This is not committing anyone anything. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for. All right. I guess if there are no more questions from the board, I guess we can open up to the public, although we typically don't, but we have folks here to speak, it appears, so we will do so at this time. But keep in mind, though, that we will take your questions, this won't necessarily be a back-and-forth format, but we can certainly take any questions raised and make sure that folks get the answers that they're looking for. So, anyone that would wish to speak related to this?
Roy signs, 426 South Mead Street, South Bend, Indiana. In this letter of intent, it says that it allows Mangus Capital Group to enter into an exclusive purchase negotiation for the acquisition of the property. The property here also includes what appears to be the building of Portage Manor, that is the fourth paragraph in this letter of intent. The operate, you know, the county-owned operated asset of Portage Manor, which may take the form of either redevelopment of Portage Manor as a component of the project or an operational integration of Portage Manor into the project. If the parties elect not to incorporate Portage Manor, the project, Mangus shall be granted the right of first refusal with respect to future disposition or redevelopment or change of control of Portage Manor. So, contrasting what Mr. Shalio just said, this letter of intent is giving Mangus Corporation or Limited Partners the ability to purchase all of this. If they privatize or do any modification to that building, then that has the ability to affect the use of that building. So, when we look at that, it's a question of where is the plan that is presented from the Board of Managers of the Health Center Portage Manor that has been presented to address this concern? Where is the feasibility study that has already been, that hasn't been done yet between a build versus buy? Where is the RFP for 112 acres that this entity is going to have the ability to purchase exclusively? In doing research, even according to their website and to the LinkedIn profile of Mr. Aurora, they're apparently a New York-based company who has operations in Grand Rapids. They have, on their website, four Magnus Capital Partners, they have listed several properties that they portray on their website. 118 Front Street is a concept, 200 Water Street is a concept, 332 West Land Street is a concept, along with two other properties that are in the concept phase. The only one that shows to be potentially completed, out of New York, is their 1137 Flatbush, which is a 12-bedroom, four-bath, 5,000-square-foot home estimated on Zillow for 900 million, or $900,000. The other part, their project that seems to be completed in Hanson Heights is apartments that is roughly 230,000 per apartment. Their Delaney Towers in North Carolina cannot find that particular townhomes there. The park at Stone Creek is permanently closed, so perhaps that.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Three minutes are up, sir. You have three minutes to address the commissioners during this portion of the meeting.
I'm sorry, Attorney Woods, that was not specified that I had three minutes.
Oversight on Mr. Costello's part, but it's been seeing you, Mr. Seitz.
Yes, so, the question, you know, some of my questions here are, this company appears not to be vetted. Their home site in Grand Rapids is less than 18 months in operation, so where is proof of concept in that? They've only started pre-leasing in March of 2021, and it would be very disappointing to see that a private company who's not been vetted through community input would have the ability to purchase 112 acres.
But that is just for.
And evict relatives.
For clarification, that is simply not the case. That is your opinion of the case, but that is not what we are looking to do. This is the very beginning of those conversations, and if we did look to move forward with a project like this, we would certainly get your input and the input of the full board and all those things. So, I agree with the comments that you made to that end, but this is nothing that we are, at this point, moving forward to evict anyone or make any substantive changes to Portage Manor.
Commissioner Costello, I appreciate that, but you also stated good mechanics are an important part of growth just a few minutes ago. Where are the proper mechanics here?
We are just at the very beginning of those mechanics.
And then Mr. Shalio also just stated that demolition is part of progress.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Next, please, and I was remiss in identifying, three minutes to address the board, thank you.
All right, is there anything else I need to be aware of before I begin my three minutes?
I think that's it.
That's it.
All right, I've got my timer going, because I have some things prepared, but I could ramble. My name is Alicia Fiesel, I reside at 639 Holton Road in La Porte, Indiana, and I have some history with Portage Manor, being as though I worked for the county for seven-some years, and I worked for the City of South Bend for a few years after that. I no longer work for either of those entities, but I'm always concerned about something that has such a social and cultural significance in the community, because that goes far beyond you all standing here right now. It goes into our past, it very much deals with our present, and it will go long into our futures. So, no insult meant here to any of you or to the developers, but for something like this, you need to put politics, finances, like money that could be made, your egos aside, you really need to think about how this might affect the future and not just follow a typical MO that you're comfortable with or an idea that you have in mind that could work without doing what this gentleman here had said, which was to follow a process and a set of procedures. Now, I'm experienced with how the county and the city both work, and I personally have experienced situations regarding historic properties that have not been disclosed to the public in the right way. But there are a lot of red flags here, so this is kind of the rambling part here. There are so many red flags that I just learned from hearing Bill talk, and I just heard from hearing Andy and this developer talk, and I'm actually kind of shocked, like, my jaw drops and I say, wow, because this developer, who's not even local, you don't even really know, and you're begging them to do what? I mean, this is just very, like, in your face here, why? I don't understand. I've been part of meeting after meeting that involved the very thoughtful management that the Portage Manor has or had, so I just found out, as I walked into this building today, that Robin is no longer with them. What does that do for the most vulnerable population? And I've seen it all, from the people who are living in the woods to the people who are living in this building. If there are, if this building is 115 years old, there are over 100 acres at stake here, there are 120 of your most vulnerable population, take those three things right there seriously. Put politics, money, and ego aside, don't repeat hasty mistakes that have been made in the past. A lot of people, including the media here, know what I'm referring to, there's a lot of them. It's sad, actually, just please, do your due diligence, don't come to this meeting here today and say, like, there is an ultimate right of refusal for this developer to do X, Y, Z, without really knowing what that means. I mean, there's study after study about this building, its condition, it's in really good shape. The management here over the years has taken great care of this building. It has some dire-liked areas that should be severed from the original building, like in the back, that are clearly in need of deconstruction, but you can move forward with that. My time is up. Just please don't vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Name the address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Joan Downs Kristenko, and I live at 849 Forest Avenue in South Bend, and I have comments in two categories. One is relative to the development company, and one is relative to the historic and public resource of Portage Manor. So, the development company rings a lot of alarm bells with me. So, they reached out, they're interested in making money. They're not interested in the cultural and historic character of the site or in all the issues that might come from the development of the site and all the loss that would be incurred for the community. So, they're looking to make money, and they reached out when they saw that an empty parcel was available somewhere, and then they concocted, they made nice with the city and said, wow, people could make a lot of money, this could be great redevelopment, and then they concocted a plan in which they get first refusal of the property, which is really dangerous. So, they sort of were a solution looking for a problem, and I'm just very alarmed by the way this has all come down. It's not a competitive process, they have an exclusive acquisition in their contract. The second comments I wanted to make were about Portage Manor itself. Some of you may know that Portage Manor is one of the few surviving public tuberculosis sanatoriums from the 19th century, and it is architecturally significant, and it was on the 10 Most Valuable and Endangered List for Indiana Historic Landmarks for some time. It has gotten the attention it needs, and it is functioning well for the indigent in our community and has been for more than a century. It's also a beautiful building and a landmark, and it should be treated with a special concern. It does sound like the fine print in this proposal suggests that both the acquisition of land and the demolition of the building could actually happen. So, I would just like to say that I hope this project will not go forward and that the building will receive more protection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew Costello, I'm the Director of Logan's Protective Services at 2505 East Jefferson Boulevard in South Bend. My department has six clients who live at Portage Manor, they have intellectual disabilities. Commissioner Dieter talked about the concerns about the homeless people who are in encampments, the most vulnerable of the people, and I think most of the many, very many of the people at Portage Manor would be exactly those people if not for the services there. Portage Manor does an excellent job of getting clients a safe place to live with making sure that their medicines are taken, making sure that they get good medical care. They also plan a lot of fun activities, and there's a very caring atmosphere at Portage Manor despite its size. Like Joan said, it's a beautiful building, and it seems to fit their needs very well. I would tread very carefully before I'd make changes to the services of Portage Manor. I would tread very carefully before I'd make changes to the services of Portage Manor and Portage Manor, the building itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Robin Chaloner, 25612 Shorewood Court, South Bend, Indiana, 46619.
Can you move closer to the mic or vice versa?
What's that?
Move your mic up or you move up.
Okay, is that good? All right. Former administrator at Portage Manor, my last day was last Friday. I just wanted to clarify, Bill had stated that he met with myself, Michael Mish, and Patty Gazi, which as you can see, Michael Mish nor Patty Gazi are here today. That was a very preliminary meeting in which he was discussing the back acreage of Portage Manor, which they terminated my farm lease, which we had farmed lease contracts since 1980, and that was terminated. So they've been looking at, the development director has been looking at different ways to utilize that property, a highway garage, and then this came forward as potentially workforce housing, which sounded like an okay idea as a, just a meet-in-the-middle, right, so that they're not taking over Portage Manor and maybe could fund some of the improvements that are needed. This memorandum was not discussed at that meeting. Bill had promised that he would have much more meetings, much more detail, and that if we did move forward with the contract, it would be very spelled out on the protection allotted with Portage Manor. This is getting the cart way before the horse, typically a bill, where zoning has not been done, and these things are not properly done. This is a knee-jerk. I'm so thankful they didn't bring this to a claims meeting, which was completely improper. I'm so thankful that that was brought up, because that's how these things happen and how the citizens and the taxpayer and the most vulnerable in this county get left behind, including the farmers in New Carlisle, and we could just go on and on with these type of situations. You are elected to serve the people of St. Joseph County and to do what is important for the most vulnerable and for the people that pay their taxes and trust in you. Please do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim McInnes, 2307 Elwood Avenue. I'm the pastor of Christ Temple Apostolic Church that's right by Portage Manor. I am not against redevelopment, because I'm a past president of the South Bend Board of Realtors, and I understand what that does to an economy, but I'm an advocate for those that are most vulnerable within our community and those that we're really not giving any consideration of as far as the services and the perception that we're streamlining a process with not giving proper consideration of the most vulnerable. I believe that it's the economic impact, but there's also the social, just perception of what is actually happening that is not good for the county at all. Now, as somebody that is in real estate, I do know that you can say that there's not going to be any displacement of those, and you're going to keep Portage Manor, but I know that property values will be impacted when you're redeveloping and you have Portage Manor right there, so that it's a slippery slope when you say that you're going to push forward and this is just the door. I think this is the door that can lead and will ultimately lead to Portage Manor not being there, and I really sincerely ask that you would reject this proposal and at least allow for time for the community to engage in this other component, because I think that that is critical to just bringing everybody on board. And we have to understand about the services provided and the vulnerable in the community. We have to show an awareness and a consideration for them, and then also go through due process and let the community engage in this process in a proper and transparent way. This does not seem transparent. This is something that many people have no idea about, that they'll see in the newspaper, and it's not, it's not going to be a good thing for the county. And we have to, as a county, consider redevelopment, but we have to consider the most vulnerable, and we have to really make a really push to say, look, are we taking care of the people within our county? And I think that we have to reject, you have to reject this, give time for due process, vetting, there might be other companies, there might be other developers, just do it. I think that we have to step forward and deny this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle, Indiana. This is coming from someone, from a simple man's viewpoint, someone who didn't pay attention in school on what you call book-stupid and street-smart. Something just does not smell good here. I was in attendance at the county council meeting last week, at which point the motel's for now was giving $830,000 roughly over the next six months to house the, mainly the folks up at the Knights Inn over by the airport. And I'm looking around the room, so I don't want to insult anybody, but why is Portage Manor being treated, I can't tell whether this is true or not, being treated like the redheaded stepchild here? I've heard from several people today, and anybody I've talked to in the past says how well Portage Manor works, and I understand that the Knights Inn is a waiting point for moving forward, and that was, that was made, well, we were made well aware of that at last week's meeting. But why is it that Portage Manor is not considered in that conversation of being a waiting point, of being upgraded, what needs to be upgraded, of, again, this is a simple man, I say, put them under the care of Portage, put temporary housing on the Portage property, it is a county-owned building. Why are we going to pay $830,000 rent when we can put, we can make arrangements on that property at Portage? Honestly, it is a beautiful structure, historic structure, and why are we talking to somebody from New York who now claims to be from Grand Rapids going to come in here and do what's best for us? He's, this person or persons are going to do what's best for their pocketbook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mario Sims. I'm Senior Pastor Dulles Chapel. I didn't know this was on the agenda, I'm here for another matter, but, you know, I visited Portage Manor a year ago. I was invited by Samwana Tejerna. I had a chance to briefly just meet Robin. I can't believe that there's a consideration to do anything other than this building to continue to fund it. I didn't even, it's an undiscovered diamond. I didn't even know, I'd drive by and go, it's a home for the poor. I didn't know what it was until I was invited. I spent half a day there talking to each and every resident and staff. I can't believe the love and the care the staff shows these people. Our building was built in 1910, their building's a little bit older, and their building is what I'd like our building to be. It's incredible. It is, I was taken through every room, including the cells that they used to have downstairs in the basement. It's an incredible building. It's an incredible staff. It's an incredible service. If nothing else, I would think that the commission should be looking at, the commissioners should be looking at ways to enhance and increase, but definitely hold on to this building. It is a jewel. It's an incredible place. The love that that staff showed and the love that the residents returned was just, it was incredible. It really was. So, like I said, I don't know the facts behind this, but in hearing what's going on, I would say that that's a wonderful place, and it needs to be preserved or improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Pierce, 55071 Berry Avenue. My brother Mike lives at Portage Manor. He's a resident, and Portage Manor has saved his life. If it wasn't for Portage Manor, he would not be here right now. They have done wonderful things for him, and they have kept him alive. He had been, he has been a resident all his life of St. Joe County. He worked for almost 40 years at Imagineering Enterprises on Sample Street and gave back to this community, and Portage Manor has given back to him. I also had an uncle that lived at Portage Manor when he got Alzheimer's, and they took care of him over there. So please reconsider. Do not let Portage Manor go away. It has been very grateful to my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, the comments from the public? All right, I have a couple of things to say. I think there are two messages that are kind of getting mixed into one. I think there is no conversation taking place about removing or doing anything to Portage Manor. I know one of the things we're trying to do, and this is being worked on by council, is where it's $8 to $10 million is what it takes to upgrade the existing Portage Manor, and it's probably going to be closer to $10 to $12 million, to get it to the level that it needs to be. So that's one of the things that's being looked at, is how do we most effectively either rehab the existing building or possibly build a new structure? That's being worked on by the county council and the commissioners as well. So we're just at the very beginning piece of this. So there's no part of this that is looking to do anything to displace, change, get rid of Portage Manor. That said, it appears as though more conversations need to take place, so I'm going to recommend that we table this, and then we have further discussion and communication with key folks. Any other?
Want to make a comment?
Yep.
Sure. The language in the fourth paragraph here, and attorneys can manipulate, language the way they want it, it's very concerning to me. Lot of extremely high and red flags on this company, the vending of that, different entities not knowing when we met, who we met, why we met first, who we're doing. And again, I personally don't think that they want to do anything with the Manor itself, but again, everything in the totality of which we're talking about, I don't trust that to be true, but as President Costello said, I think there needs to be a lot more conversation of this company, where they have established businesses, what they have done specifically. I think we're way, way too ahead of that. It's very disappointing that, for whatever reason, the board wasn't together as one, but again, that can be conversation that can go on at a different time. There's way too many questions that are unanswered here, which I attempted to find some, but I would agree, I would actually make a different recommendation, but I have no problem at this time tabling that, let the public get more information. But we, as a county, specifically need a lot more information on how we got to this point, who this company is, what they do, and if it's going to be beneficial for St. Joe County. I have no further comment at this time.
Commissioner Fleming, any comments?
Well, I agree with what Derek was saying, too, but again, I've been trying to help for the last several years to try to upgrade the facility there and everything. I even talked to the state and our Lieutenant Governor, Suzanne Crouch, about helping to get the financing in so we can help it, because I really love the opportunity. And I love the fact that there are people there that we can help, and I always want to try to help people, and that's why I want the property there, too, because maybe there's something, as I made the county age-friendly, that that's an area that we could actually help age people there, too. So anyway, I just want to make sure that we're heading in the right direction and not some people going this way and this way. No, 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 let's all come together, let's make sure we've got our goals in place, our objectives in place, and because again, I really love helping people, and I even had been there as a dentist, helping people in there that needed dental care. So I just, you know, I just like to help, so I want to make sure that we can continue to help people, and I'm very honored and excited to be able to continue to do that and not get rid of it. I want to make sure that we do it, update it, get everything better, so that, and even though, as we get older, I love elderly people to sit there and go, oh, I feel so much better, so happier. Yes, I'm better now than that, because I'm even concerned about the homeless people that we have that are ageless. I'm like, you know, the aged homeless people, I'm like, oh, my gosh, no, 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 let's help that. So anyway, that's what I want to make sure we can keep things moving forward in the right direction, not just dropping it down and selling it to other people. No, that's just my opinion, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so is there a motion to table?
Do we want to table it, or just?
Well, I mean, there are some questions that we need to get answered, and then it's easier if we table it. I mean, if we don't need, if the will of the Board of Commissioners is not pick it back up, then it doesn't get picked back up, but whatever the, I'll entertain a motion.
What do you want me to do, Derek?
Normally, I would, like, do it in favor, but I wouldn't give everybody the opportunity to come, I guess, clean with what y'all, your intent to do is here, why it's going to be done, who this, like I alluded to, who this company is. Again, I don't know if I'll give a good answers of why the board wasn't on this together and all the other behind-the-scenes. So reluctantly, yes, I will table it or make that motion to table it to get more information, and then we'll go from there, but I want the public to be known that I'm not in favor of this at all. I'm giving them the opportunity to get more information to us so we can talk about it, and again, appreciate everybody's time and effort to come down here and stay in the loop, because definitely, I'm not going to let this go, because this whole thing, it's just very upsetting to me, the way it came out to us, and so on and so forth. So I'll make a motion or second your motion to table it.
Is to table it? I'll second it.
We have a motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Table.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. All business, hearing or seeing none. Public comments. Are there any public comments? Please note that you will be limited to three minutes as you address the board.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. It concerns me again that we're talking about the solar, proposed solar project in New Carlisle now. We have not received the item report yet from the fire at the infamous shredder. So it could be that we won't need that water from the aquifer that may or may not be poisoned now from whatever ran off from fighting that fire with over a million gallons of water. But there's 1,900 acres of farmland there that needs water, but again, maybe you won't want to use that water after the report comes back from item on the fire at the shredder. But to think that the parties coming that are, we hear are involved in this, primarily British Petroleum, and I also hear that Toyota is involved, too, need some sort of financial incentive to come in here is just beyond me. Why are we putting together, like, a lure to say, come on, guys, come on in here and we'll create this, in this instance, TIF district for this new TIF district for you? And I understand that the base tax, the ag value of the property is still going to be rolled into the county, is still going to be rolled into the taxes, but anything above that from the panels, for many improvements on the property, is going to be eaten up by the TIF and for improvements within the TIF, and it's coming to, it's going to result in job loss. They've been upfront about it, saying it's only going to create one to three jobs, we're not going to impact your community, so why should we pay school taxes and pay fire taxes? Because we've only got one to three people there full-time. I'm guaranteeing you, there are a lot more than one to three agricultural jobs that will be lost. At Gavillon Grain, at the truck drivers, at the pickers, everybody involved in agriculture on downstream that is going to be, result in a job loss for these one to three jobs and this creation of the TIF district. I would urge the commissioners to oppose the creation of this TIF district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I comment, not on the solar thing, on the shredder fire real quick? We met last week at, with Omni Source, with Isle of Township people, New Carlisle people. Chief Schweitzer is on vacation, he'll have the full report this week, and then as the representative or overseer of our EMA, I'm going to come up with what can we do in the future, what didn't they do correctly. They did just a short walkthrough, which, until I get the fire report and all that. So we will come out and let the citizens know, but certainly, after the act, what, why did it happen? What did it cause? What went into the water? And then in the future, how can we, as county people, make sure that we have everything out there, it's needed? So we'll begin on that. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mario Sims. I'm Senior Pastor Dulles Chapel, 608 South St. Joseph Street, South Bend, Indiana. South Bend, Indiana. Out of respect for my three minutes, I'm going to-
You didn't have school?
I'm going to condense this. May 17, 2019, I was in a meeting at the church with Pastor Graylin Watson and First District City Councilman Kenneth Lee. When we were concluding the meeting, we heard a commotion, we went outside, and a man and woman who we allowed to plant, place a tent on our property had just returned from lunch from the Hope Rescue to discover that they had buckets of urine and fecal matter dumped out of the window from the house at 614. The house at 614 is owned by Sheila McCarthy, who is currently the manager of the Motels For Now program. I had a meeting yesterday, the people whose tent it was said, because I'd said it was one bucket, she said it was five buckets of urine. We posted pictures of those buckets on the curb side. I also provided the commissioners, along with the council, the link to the ABC 57 story, and also the police run. What I didn't want today was to have what we saw with the county council, which is the force of numbers. What I want to bring in is the force of truth today. I've known all of you over the years through your involvement in various community issues, and you've always responded from your heart and with wisdom in doing what's best for this community. So what I'm standing here today to ask you to do with the county council, six members of the county council wouldn't do, which is veto the allocation of this money. I've been in favor of homeless housing. My wife and I have laid it down. We've even housed homeless in our house. We've housed over 127 homeless people since we bought the church in 2013. It's what we do. We're not against housing the homeless, no one could say that. We just received a, an award for this, a resolution from the city council unanimously in January for housing the homeless. That's not, we're not opposing that. We're opposing who the money is going to. This is bad optics. To have someone, this possibly can be considered a federal hate crime. When you assault someone with fecal matter, and talking to Tanya, who was the female in the video, this woman has never apologized. But she's over a homeless housing program. I don't get why the county council didn't get it, but I'm asking you to get it. We're better than this as a community. Yes, we need to house the homeless. No, we don't need to fund a program with a leader abusing homeless people like that. There's other issues, the 363 police calls. I talked to Officer Keenan Lane, Problem Properties Officer. It is a problem property. He's, I talked to him last week. There's just, then you have the not in my neighborhood, the Our Lady of Rhodes people, many of them live.
Pastor Sims, your three minutes has expired, I mean, it's over a little bit, so I just-
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm finished.
Just so you know, Pastor, we are unable to vote on, so the action that council took for the funding for the Motels For Now program, there is the only action that is required. We are not allowed, by the way, the ARP funding has been structured, to weigh in on that and vote on that, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make a record. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
To be clear, there are two directives from the Indiana State Board of Accounts, one in on May 8, March 18, then updated on May 12, that gives directive to local units of governments that because these are federal discretionary dollars, they're not the regular tax dollars the county council would appropriate, the only action necessary is the appropriation of the money by the legislative body, the fiscal body, which is the St. Joseph County Council here in St. Joseph County. That's why we have no action over this. And that's not uncommon, we don't act on zoning matters and other matters by statute and by law, so, but that is why there's no vote on it today.
Hello, my name's Jennifer Robinson, I live on Greenmont Drive in South Bend, Indiana. The reason I came, because I remember seeing the videos of the urine and the fecal matter being dumped on the tents, and I know the young lady that it got dumped on, she is now housed, she has a home now, she's actually doing well. But I can't imagine any one of you, or anyone on the council, dumping feces on somebody. And I don't understand why this lady is still in charge of the homeless. She apparently doesn't have compassion. She says she's a Christian. I don't think that's a Christian thing to do. I know we aren't supposed to be discussing law and, I mean, politics and God and the same thing, but I don't think that she should be running the program, and is anyone really watching what she's doing with the money? Because what I've seen of the money, it doesn't look like much is being spent over there where I've passed, at the hotel, and I think this is the wrong person to give these grants or monies to. Apparently, she doesn't care for the homeless too much, and if she did, she wouldn't have dumped fecal matter or urine on them, and that's disgusting. I would have, I'm not as nice as the pastor is, I think I would have done something myself, I would have punched her if she ever did that to my tent. And I just, I don't understand why we have given her so much money, and is anyone watching what she's doing with the money? Is anyone watching, or does anyone know that, or if anyone's accounting what she's doing with it?
Ma'am, this is a time for you to address the commissioners, who usually do not engage in back-
Oh, sorry, I didn't know that. I was just asking a question.
About a minute and a half, so anything else you want to say?
Not much, I just hope that you guys look into this woman, Sheila, who's running this program, and kind of evaluate her before you hand over such types of money. But thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name's Brian Wise, 1412 South Carroll. My address is in charge, I'm homeless.
Can you pull that microphone toward you a little bit?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, can you hear me better?
Thank you.
Okay. Just see you, little McCarthy. I'm not here to make her look like a bad person, but these people are not lying. She went across on public property and stole my tent, after they had put me out over there. I had New Center 16 come out, they came down to the auditor, you guys went back and re-filmed them. I had my wife and my kids, all our stuff was taken by them, they signed a contract with us. Within the 30 days to put us out, they let people steal our stuff. I have not got no recollection, Mike Hammond will not talk to me, I've been down here three times. These people are not right. They tell me they're not even a church, but like she just said, they consider to be Christians. No, they shouldn't be awarded anything. As a matter of fact, they keep harassing me on the street. The lady that works for them, Tracy Letha, has been out here asking some of these homeless people to put their hands on me and hurt me, because I exposed them. Now, I'm sorry you did something in front of me, I didn't agree with it, but it's, they need to do something, because why am I being threatened now? My life's at risk, and I'm just trying to get my stuff together. I work part-time in Notre Dame during the football games. Granted, this year, we're actually making better money than we were, I'm making 20 an hour, but it's only one day a week. I do have a stage-one neuropathy, so it's hard for me to move, so I'm doing what I can. But these people, they stole from me, they, I put my tent across the street, and then when that guy, Michael Atkins, that died, they wanted him, they wanted me. They weren't going after him. They were going after him because he was helping me expose them. They kicked my kids out, I had to move my kids to a course motel because they couldn't stay in a tent. It's not proper for them. She went over there, took my tent and everything. I had $100 in clothes and tents in my tent. That was private property, that wasn't her property. She even admitted to me, "I stole it," she said, "I gave it to this other lady." "Who you gave it to? Why would you touch my things?" They had my truck impounded on their property when I left them a note, they're doing all this to get back at me. And I have nothing now, and in the seven months I was in that program, I came up, I built it a lot, my kids had a lot. We had two kids, and a Playstation, just little things we could buy, but they had new clothes, we were doing better. I'm back down at the bottom again, I'm sleeping on the side of the curb. I don't know what's going on. I even went down to talk to Margie Dalphi, that owns Our Lady, pretty much in church language, she told me, "I got robbed, get over it and lock the door in my face." All I wanted to do was sit down and have coffee with her and say, "Who's going to pay for my things?" She said, "They get paid in due time." What's that mean? I mean, of course, I'm poor, I can't afford a lawyer, I've been discriminated on. They called the cops when I sit across the road from Knights Inn, tell me that, they called because my lady and kids were over there? They live at Knights Inn, they were at Knights Inn. He said, "That's fine, as long as they have a place to live." That's the only time, we had time to spend, family time, so that wasn't a problem. An hour later, they come back and said there was a fight over there. Every time I'm around there, they call the police on me. I drove there to get diapers one day, and the lady called the police on me when my wife was in the hospital.
Your three minutes are over, thank you very much for coming.
I don't think that was three minutes, sir, but-
It was three minutes and 12 seconds as of right now, so.
Okay.
I wish for change of your time, sir, but I do appreciate it.
Appreciate you. You got what I had to say, I got some more for you. This lady is not on for minutes, so I'm going to stay with her.
All right, so before I start my three minutes, I'm going to go ahead and apologize, because I'm not on any medication, I'm not on drugs, I'm just traumatized, I'm very traumatized because there's a lot of organized crime in our city. Either way, we've got police that, I'm having to do their job, I'm very, I'm sorry, my name's Ashley Kinder. Either way, I'm fighting for my own life each and every day, if there's, I left my baseball bat at the door, but yeah, I'm having to fight for my own self, because I have no one else. Either way, they're being paid to not help me, they're being paid to try to kill me, I'm done, I'm done with that, I'm fed up, and I'm here to speak for, my three minutes will start now.
Ashley, like, take a breath, you're all right, just relax.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I apologize.
No, don't apologize, like, we get nervous all the time, just take a breath.
No, I'm not nervous, I'm just, I'm fed up.
Okay.
I'm overload, overload, overloaded.
Okay, go ahead.
This lady's been in the program now twice. They just took her back the other day and put her back out.
They let her-
First off, let's start off with, okay, my three minutes, my three minutes will start now, okay? I was laying by myself on the side of the street, and Tracy is the one that came and found me. I never signed up for this place, I never wanted to ask for help, I beg a woman, I've worked my whole life and I've provided for my own, until my son was shot and killed, and it doesn't matter, there's a lot of things that has happened to me in my life, but I've always, I've always worked for my own stuff. Either way, she came to me that day, and I didn't sign up for nothing. She immediately took me into the Motels For Now, where, when I got there, the first day, they stole both of my phones and all my stuff, because they put me with a certain person. Well, I already knew that that person stole my stuff, and I left the Motels For Now. And then certain things happened to me out on the street again, because, like I said, it's all organized crime here in South Bend, and I just, I said, "Okay, let's try the Motels one more time," because there's just no hope for me. I had no hope, I had faith, so I gave it one more try. So I was, around there this past week, I went back out there one more time, and I wasn't even there for two days before I was having to put up a fight for my life, because they were allowing people to pull knives on me, they were allowing prostitution to happen, they were allowing theft, they were allowing all kinds of stuff to happen. Either way, I wasn't going down without a fight. Instead of using the knife that I had to pull out, I gave it to the person that works there, and she had a knife, she had all kinds of stuff, they did all kinds of stuff to me this time, and I don't have three minutes, I don't have nearly enough time to explain everything that they did to me this time. Either way, I'm back on the streets, and I don't know what to do today, I don't know what I'm going to do today, I don't know what I'm going to do tonight, so, everything, anything that happens, it's on you guys, it's on the city, it's on, because you guys heard it, you guys heard it, yeah.
Let them get away with the programs.
Yeah, don't let this organized crime continue, because it'll be all over the news, hopefully, all over the world, hopefully, yeah. Yeah, huh?
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you.
This would be my mother and my children, so you know. Go ahead. Go ahead. Tell them twice.
My name's Tricia Coons, and I, my name's Tricia Coons, and they're not lying, because the program, Tracy specifically, came up to me on June 1st and asked me if I would set my own husband up, because he was in jail. She even had someone come and, she's even had someone come and try and give me drugs too, so that's why I was at the hospital. They took everything from our children, even my husband's got the pictures and videos on his phone. But they've, they really downed us from, when we was first at Westwood, everything was fine, we built everything up, moment we stepped foot to Knights Inn, everything went downhill. All of our stuff got taken, our truck got towed.
Tell them, people forced in your room, you gave them drugs, gave them bad drugs? Tell them.
They had people come inside my room, had me, they gave me drugs that, they told me it was one thing, then I, of course, I'm not, I'm not a type of person to do drugs. So it's like, why would you tell me it's one thing when it was actually fentanyl? So I was, I had to go to a mental hospital pretty much, and they pretty much just didn't even care. They wanted me, like, they was trying to kill me and blame it on my husband, saying that he gave it to me when he didn't. He was in jail the whole time.
That father left, no, that's safe, just go on.
They've even had people out there molesting children. They've had people that would go out there, sell their drugs, then automatically pay them to leave, when you just put a family with kids out on the street and just not even care whether we're going to go that night or not. They've even, they've even had, they put us in mode, knowing that it's bad for our health, the whole time, when we was at one motel, it was fine, got to Knights Inn, my husband became sick, and even the youngest one got sick. So it's like, we try to watch where we go and stuff, but all they're doing is pretty much like, they just don't even care.
Thank you for coming, your three minutes are up, but thank you for coming to address the commissioners this morning.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Roy Sines, 426 South Mead, I'll be much shorter this time. Just point of clarification, I'm not opposed to any type of development or anything of that nature, of what's going on at the Portage Farm, all right? But the way that the wording was written in that letter of intent could be very easily misconstrued, and so I hope that that will be taken into consideration if it is brought back up procedurally in the future. Secondly, I understand that it is difficult to get people to volunteer for boards, and obviously, you know, the board of managers, you know, their duty is to make these recommendations to the commissioners, both under their bylaws and by Indiana statute. So I hope that they will have the opportunity to present a solid plan, and even if they have to reach out to the former administrator that may have resources for them to tap into, I know that she's done a lot of research for the benefit of Portage Manor. The last thing would be that, as we're looking at finding board of managers, we have a lot of people that fall into that last category, which is, you know, good, solid people of the community, right? But given the nature of what Portage Manor does, and obviously, we've seen it here with the homeless issues, that we need people that are professionals in the field, that maybe we can lean on, that are doctors, dieticians, and in the medical field. So I hope that's taken into consideration for next appointments of board of managers for Portage Manor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Ms. Drake.
Hi, I wanted to talk about the Knights Inn, I know you're not voting on it, but what I'm most concerned about with the Knights Inn situation is that there seem to be no rules being enforced. People need structure to succeed, otherwise you are enabling them and keeping them down, and that's not the point of government intervention, and it does nothing to improve the homeless situation. Furthermore, if police and the fire department have been forced to respond to more than 300 calls at the Knights Inn, this has become both a crime center and a drain on public safety resources. If children are staying at this place, which it is my understanding that they are, I can't believe the dangerous situations that they are living in. I would never let a child of mine even set foot in the parking lot, nonetheless, inside of the building, with criminals and drug addicts and mentally ill people, and I'm guessing also sex offenders. Even with doors that lock, I do not trust that these kids are safe, and if we're funding these centers to help the homeless, the homeless kids should be the number one population we're worried about. I was listening to a commentary this morning about the homeless populations in New York and San Francisco, and these were the observations. In New York, when the city emptied during COVID, the homeless population took over, there are now open drug markets on the street. In San Francisco, it's much more dire, blocks and blocks of the Tenderloin neighborhood are tent cities, and streets smell like weed. Mentally ill people and drug addicts are roaming everywhere, there are no cops, there's no semblance of city government, it looks like the third world, it's as if the area was completely abandoned, except for, of course, the homeless population. The number of police and people that keep order is- The number of police and people that keep order is lessening, and this is further escalating the problem. We can't afford to let the situation here get further out of control so we turn into something like New York and San Francisco. One of the commenters said that we've just made it too easy to be homeless, and that's what it sounds like is going on at the Knights Inn. While I'm not saying no resources should be offered, I'm wondering why we are making it so easy for them to be homeless. To start with, if these people are eligible for government funding, which it sounds like they are, why aren't people contributing some of their welfare checks to pay for their food or housing? I'm wondering how many people are being attracted to our area because we make it too easy. My understanding is that people are coming from not only Indiana, but Illinois and Michigan too. So we need to stop, put a stop to this before it gets too out of hand. The Knights Inn situation sounds like a mess. It isn't fair to the people we're supposedly helping. And it isn't fair to the communities where these lawless homeless centers exist. It's a very difficult situation, the homeless situation. We won't be able to solve it all, but at least we can stop using methods that are failing us right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing and seeing none, a motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.